Fifteenth, twenty seventeen. This meeting is being broadcast live and for future rebroadcasting. If we could please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kelly Hayes is here for our student representative report for the high school.
Life at Douglas High School has been quite calm recently, but it's beginning to pick up once again. Last week, the Veterans Day Assembly was held, and a huge thank you goes out to Mrs. Fitz and Mr. Nankor for their efforts, and all students who were involved in the making of the presentation. First quarter progress reports were released at the end of last week and are available for viewing on iPass. On Tuesday, November twenty first, from Kayla Dunn's senior project, she will be holding Douglas's first ever Power to Puff football game. All girls are encouraged to sign up, while the boys are encouraged to come watch the game on Tuesday after school on the athletic field. Another senior project will take place tomorrow with the annual student faculty basketball game. Can goods are being collected from all players and spectators that wish to support. The collected items will go towards local food pantries in the time of need coming up for the holiday season. The collection of lightly used dresses for Becca's closet will be coming to a close this Friday. Be sure to drop off your dresses in the bin that is located in the office of the high school. Yesterday, fall sports came to a close with the Fall Sports Awards Ceremony. Congratulations to all fall athletes on great seasons, and good luck to the three Douglas High School cross-country runners, Trevor and Keely Manjum and Clark Bishop, who qualified and will be running in the All-State Meet this Saturday. Great efforts were put forth by all Douglas athletes this season. With the close of the fall season, the Winter Sports Information Night was also held yesterday evening. Family ID is now open for all winter sports signups. Cheerleading tryouts are taking place through the rest of this week, and all other winter sports tryouts begin on Monday, November twenty seventh. We are wishing the best of luck to all winter athletes in their upcoming seasons. December is right around the corner and is a busy month for the high school. The winter concert will be held on December seventh in the auditorium. On December twelfth, progress reports will be released, and on December fifteenth, the first drama club play written by Caleb Hamilton will take place. Closing off the month before winter break will be the annual winter skips performed by each class. The high school is once again doing a Thanksgiving drive with the goal to get full meals for at least four families in need, under the direction of Mrs. Sokol and Mrs. Carpenter. We encourage all who can make a donation if possible. Thank you in advance.
I have a quick question. What time is the game tomorrow?
I'm pretty sure it's right after school.
After school? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Do we have anyone here for public comment?
There's a young man in the back.
Seeing none, we'll move on to the school committee and subcommittee report, starting with Brett for the accounts payable report.
Ah, sorry, not prepared. So, yeah, we had a small batch of accounts payables last week that we filled out totaling thirteen hundred and seventy-one dollars fifty cents. We have the details in the package here. Only three items. I think we have another batch tomorrow, a small batch tomorrow?
Oh, we have lots of them tomorrow.
A big one tomorrow, okay. So, maybe some time tomorrow. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I messed that up.
Yeah, there were two sets.
Yeah, I knew it was three items, okay. So, one item was thirteen seventy-one fifty, another item was thirty-four thousand one thirty-three sixty-four, and then the third item was one hundred and forty-two thousand three sixty-seven sixty-two.
Does anyone have any questions? Very good. The next thing is I'm going to report on the MAS-C, MAS-S joint conference. I want to thank you for approving my attendance at the twenty-seventeen joint MAS-C, MAS-S conference. I went knowing few people and was able to network with other school committee members, superintendents, MAS-C staff, and legislators. I think the legislators recognized me by now, and some MAS-C staff see me and say, Douglas, the district that financially is getting the short end of the stick, in part due to the amount of state-owned land. It's true. We are underfunded in so many ways, like so many of the three hundred and fifty-one districts within the Commonwealth. However, I always put forth that if there's any district that knows how to make lemonade out of lemons, it's Douglas. We don't have everything we need and have worked hard to put measures in place to get our district caught up on many needs we've gone without over the past several years. It feels like two steps forward and one step back many days, but our district administration, teachers and staff are dedicated to making sure our students get the best of them. So, one thing that I, one piece that I kind of honed in on at the conference was social and emotional learning, because that's kind of, in our world, new buzzwords. I mean, we didn't have this sort of thing when we were growing up. I learned that academic achievement scores, on average, are eleven points higher with students who have received some level of SEL, social and emotional learning, guidance. I think that's pretty significant with the types of things that our kids are having to deal with these days. And it doesn't always have to be something where, you know, where we have to throw money at the problem. Small, small things, like having your teachers greet the kids at their door in the morning instead of sitting at their desk waiting for them can make a huge difference. You see videos all the time of people, teachers, that have like different handshakes that have gone, and the videos go viral because they've got handshakes, and that's, even though we've always said, you know, the bus drivers are the first people who see the kids in the morning, that's only one piece of that puzzle. How you're greeted by your teacher can really say a lot. So, that was one thing. One district actually has four breaks a year. Friday and Monday, no homework, no sports weekends, really so that families can concentrate on family time, and whether they choose to do that or not, there's no homework assigned until Tuesday. So, just kind of giving them, kids, families, a chance to breathe and kind of come back together can really help kids' social and emotional learning. So, I do know that we do have some social and emotional learning going on in the district so far.
So, as you know, over the last couple of years, we've brought in Nancy Clemens in social thinking, and that curriculum is being implemented pre-K up to, I think it's grades five. I don't think it's in grade six as of yet. I don't think we do it in the middle school as of yet. But again, things like perspective-taking is a point, and people using the same common vocabulary, and the staff has grabbed onto it. I think they find it valuable and useful, and I think going forward, you want to expand it and try to get it all the way up to the high school. We did introduce it at the middle school and the high school. They have not fully embraced it like the lower grades have, which is, which is okay, because the lower grades are really sort of taking the lead on it. And you talked about the greetings, and, you know, one of the things that was, to me, was always important was to be out in the hallway first thing in the morning. And so, kids couldn't just walk by, and they heard from me, and from Mr. Vega was always out there with me, and another teacher would be out there. And it was, I just, you want to set the tone when they walk in, that, you know, welcome to the school, glad you're here type of thing, and I think it pays dividends, and I agree with you, that the teachers being out in the hallways and and having that rapport. One of the things that we've been talking about a lot at the admin is the idea of building communities, a school community, and not only is it within your own building, but then collaboratively a full-building type of community, and social thinking is part of that process.
Thank you. Something else that I learned about, I went to a seminar on the opioid epidemic. The biggest takeaway from this seminar for me is that we need to make sure we have clear and open communication within the school community. Perhaps this means that if a student has surgery and is prescribed a narcotic, it's reported to the school nurse. One of the panelists revealed that her child came home from college for a wisdom tooth extraction and was prescribed ninety Percocet. Ninety. It takes five days to become addicted to an opioid. Who needs ninety Percocet to have a tooth extracted? You know, back in our day, that what, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't like this. And what was really interesting to me was the amount of drugs that are being prescribed, the narcotics, the Vicodin, the Percocets, the oxycodone, it's all based upon one report that was in the Journal of American, the American Medical Association. It was one study that was done years and years ago that said that there wasn't any chance of addiction.
There was a one percent chance of addiction, which interestingly was funded by pharmaceuticals. Not surprisingly. In my day, you had, you could take a bear aspirin, or if you maybe, as I was a little bit older, you could take an extra strength bear aspirin.
So, you know, I know that I'm pretty confident, I remember Mrs. Campbell coming and presenting Narcan to us, so we have that available in the schools, but I think that we, I don't know what we're doing to get ahead of it, and having conversations or, you know, making sure that we know when a kid's going out because they have a sports injury and they're having surgery, and how, how we're educating our generation who, we're not used to all of this stuff, so...
We've had presentations, and just recently, the middle school and the high school had a presentation, John Marillo, Marilo, one-man show, and it was about a variety of things, but addiction was one of the, one of the pieces. We've had Chris Heron at the, who was the former Celtic, who spoke Project Purple, I think is the name of the program, and they came here. We had a very interesting one, which was the local assistant DA, assistant DA Brett Falone had organized it, and we had some, some people who have been addicted speak at that, and that was very powerful for the kids as well. So, we have done a number of things, but, I mean, this is clearly a national issue, and clearly doctors are now, my understanding is that they're finally realizing they need to back off on the prescriptions, because, you know, as you said, a kid, you know, has a, goes in for a knee injury, and the next thing you know, it's, then they're, they're giving them oxycodone, and it's like, wait a second. So, yeah, it is a problem. You raise a good point, and I don't know, and it's something that I'm going to have to look in with Kathy Campbell on, is do we have anything in place right now for an individual who was injured, be it a sport injury, it could be, I mean, we've had a number of kids at the high school, the motorbikes and those dirt bikes and so forth, and next thing you know, they're, they're getting prescriptions and so forth. So, it'd be, it is kind of an interesting thing that most parents are pretty good, because as you know, they've got to bring the medications to the school, and they do convey the information to the, to the nurses, but I don't know that it's universal, which is something we could look into.
There's also a screening that's being taken place, right? A state-mandated screening that's going on in the schools too. That's going to be starting up new this year.
Is it this year?
I believe it's this year. They're supposed to be, well, it's probably next year, but this school year. Is that, that's how it's presented, I think, but...
So, it's like starting January?
I don't know. It just came home and it said that there'd be more information, but it's just certain grades, right? The seventh, seventh and ninth, I think.
I'm not really all that, all that up to speed on that. I'll have to look into that.
The next thing I got, I went to the legislative update. There are a couple of things coming up that we should all be aware of. The fair share amendment, otherwise known as the millionaire's tax, is going to be on the ballot next November. This tax would add an additional four percent tax after you make your first million, so I know we're all affected. So, this would add an additional two billion dollars to the Massachusetts budget. The intent is one billion would go towards state transportation and one billion to education, but even with this one billion dollars, Chapter Seventy would still be underfunded. So, that's one piece. And the other piece is that there are people lobbying to have a ballot initiative to reduce the state sales tax from six and a quarter percent to five percent. However, if this were to pass and the millionaire's tax passed, it would be a wash. The state keeps cutting the budget mid-year because receipts are down. I think it would be irresponsible to lower the state sales tax, in part due to the rising costs of education and healthcare in the state. I'm sure we're going to hear a lot more about those initiatives over the next year. There's probably going to be a lot of phone calls, a lot of TV ads, but, you know, it's something to give thought to. You know, is an extra one and a quarter percent in our pocket, you know, worth having to fight for every single dollar to educate our kids? I mean, and that's what it comes down to for me. And quite honestly, I don't know any millionaires, so I know where I stand on that. But also, as reported by the National Education Association, and this I didn't learn from MAS-C, I actually read this today, the tax proposal released recently by the Republican leadership of the U.S. House of Representatives puts nearly two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand education jobs at risk while offering five trillion dollars in giveaways to the nation's wealthiest individuals and rich corporations. The House plan all but eliminates the critical state and local tax deduction, otherwise known as SALT, which will hobble the ability of state and local governments to invest in their public schools by destabilizing their budgets. I urge everyone to contact our congressmen and representatives to speak out about this tax proposal. We're having enough trouble finding, we're having enough trouble funding education without an additional burden. So, those, that's the legislative update. And then the last couple more things. I did attend a seminar in communicating effectively in crisis and controversy. I thought it was important, based upon the Alice training, and a couple of things came, well, one thing in particular, delineating safe mode versus lockdown mode. Not everything would call, would call for a lockdown, possibly like if, if someone's in the building who is not staff, faculty, or administration, there, we know that they're in the building, but there's no weapons or threats, we can contact the teachers and have them know that we're in safe mode, but it doesn't, it doesn't cause the panic when the kids are texting home, we're in lockdown. It's a, it would be a separate definition altogether.
Don't they have that?
So, safe mode, to me, sounds a little bit like...
Stay in place?
Our shelter in place, or, or an external lockdown. So, the shelter in place means that it's okay, that there's no threat, no longer a threat, you can continue doing what you're doing, but we're not going to dismiss the students or anything like that until we have an all-clear from the police, but the threat is no longer imminent within the building. And then, an external lockdown is that we get information from the police that says there's something going on in the center of town. Because of that, we don't want you to dismiss students, so in other words, we would continue to do what we were doing, but if the, if the day ended, we would stay in that last period of class until they told us we could be dismissed. And that, that has actually happened here on a few occasions at the high school. I don't know that it's happened in other buildings, but it has happened here. So, that sounds to me a little bit like the safe mode, is the shelter in place and the external lockdown, and again, it's just verbiage.
Okay, yeah, and that's probably where my confusion came in, so thank you.
And so, the shelter in place means that there was a threat. The threat has now been eliminated or is no longer prevalent, and you can go about going back to your class, staying in your classroom, but you can go back to instruction and so on and so forth. And the external says that you just, you continue your day, so if the bell rings, you go to your next class and so forth, because the threat isn't in the building. So, that's, I think that's probably what your safe mode is.
Right. The last thing that was really interesting, the last day, they had something called Student Voices. Student Voices was a panel of four students representing Massachusetts Student Councils and an MIAA student representative. While students stated that it's important for them to learn life skills, they feel they're prepared academically to go to college, but not to handle life. They want to learn how to file taxes and balance a checkbook. I think we're so focused on meeting the standards, rightfully so, that these basic skills have been set aside, and that's just some food for thought for, for all of us, where, you know...
It's true, very true.
I never took home ec. I can't sew, I can't, you know, caulk, I caulk, but it's mostly in the microwave. You know, I think that we, it was very interesting to hear that from these kids, that we don't know how, we don't know how to do basic things, so...
The one thing that, that we have in place here is, we do have, as you know, we do have foods, and it's very popular. We do have family life, which is really very practical skills.
What was the first one?
Foods, foods and nutrition.
Okay, thank you.
Foods, there's a introductory and then a second, a second year of it that you can take. And it, they do a lot of things within the building, a lot of things within the community and stuff like that. So, in, quite a few kids take those courses. We do have financial planning, but I forget, personal finance is the name of the class that we offer here. That's another piece of it. We do have entrepreneurship, so some business pieces of it, but, so there are some things, but not everybody takes those, not everybody takes those, so, because they're all basically electives.
So, that's my update from MAS-C. I think it was, it was really good. It's very informative, and certainly, I think it, it would benefit you as a superintendent to go in the future, and for other school committee members to attend as well. I think it makes a lot of sense.
And I went this summer, as you know, I went to the, the first time, and, but I had, I have always gone as an assistant principal and principal to the administrators, one down the cape as well. I think it's great for, if nothing else, for the networking and the real hands-on opportunities to discuss, you know, situations in your school, how do you handle it? How do you, most of the, to me, the most, the most benefit I get is when we do the roundtable kind of conversations. I mean, there's, there's a lot of good presentations, but the roundtable is really jobalike, experienced conversations and sharing, and that's the, that to me is the benefit of those, those conferences. And it's, in the summertime, it's a little bit easier to get away for a couple, three days to do that, whereas to try to piecemeal it is really hard during the school year.
Yeah.
It's just a little bit more beneficial when you can, you can set aside two or three days to really do it and really get to know people. And is it Ashland that had the, the days?
Yep.
Having coached at Ashland for a number of years, I...
They extend, they started, made their start times later.
Yeah, they're another one of the schools. There's a few other districts that have gone that way now, that have made the high school later in the, or in the elementary.
How is that working out? Does anyone?
They love it. They love it. But also interesting, they just approved full-day kindergarten, which surprised me.
Right.
That, you know, a town like Ashland, you know, it took so long to approve full-day kindergarten for everyone.
Which actually is an interesting point. One of the things that we've been working on as, as a admin team is the, starting to put some work into the district improvement plan. And so, one of the things that you always do is you look at what other people are doing, and it's kind of interesting to see, you know, that they're, they're implementing, they're looking to implement social and emotional learning, or they, they're looking to implement a one, a one-to-one program for the Chromebooks and so forth, or, so, sometimes you have to look outside to see that you really are ahead of the game in that, you know, you get kind of blinded by being in your own building all the time.
You do.
Before I move off of this, that school committee part, I just want to say publicly that Mr. Means has agreed that he wants to stay for an additional year, so we are going to be negotiating, just, we're starting that process, in case that wasn't clear.
I just wanted to follow up on the conference. I'm sure a majority of the benefit comes from being in there, but I believe MAS-C has made all the presentation materials available.
You know, they said they did.
Okay.
And it was, I was looking through my app tonight to, to see if I could guide people. I know one in particular, it was, it's selforma.org/district. That was their presentation, that's what the social and emotional learning piece that I had gone to. I can send that link to you if you want. That, that's the only one that I know of, but I'm sure it's on, it's got to be on there.
They posted on Facebook that they were going to make all the materials available.
I thought it was on the app, but I'll have to, I'll look into it, see if I can find it.
Okay.
So, that's that. So, now we'll move on to consent agenda. We've got meeting minutes for October eighteenth, thirtieth, and November first. I did not see anything that needed to be changed. Did you?
Yeah, I did have something on October eighteenth on both the first page, bottom of the first, and top of the second. It mentions in the third sentence on the first page at the bottom, it says, outside providers have been called in to assist. We never had any outside providers coming in, it says, it was other staff.
Right, it's just a word choice.
Okay.
Yeah.
When you say outside providers, Courtney's right, it sounds like you hired somebody.
Contracted, oh, but no, no, those are not providers.
Somebody came from the middle school down to the primary school.
Right, yeah.
On both, in both cases, it was other staff, you know, staff members and members of each school's team or something like that, but yeah, definitely was not outside providers.
Thank you for catching me.
How would you reword it?
So, on the first, first page, Martin, first you say other staff.
Other staff have been called in.
That makes sense.
In the top, what would you suggest?
Same thing, I would think.
Yeah, other staff, yep, fine, yep, for both.
Was there anything else?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of October eighteenth, two seventeen, two thousand seventeen, as amended tonight.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any issues on October thirtieth? Very short.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of October thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And November first? Everything look good?
Yep, make a motion to approve November first, twenty seventeen, school committee meeting. Full committee meeting minutes, I got your...
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We need to move on to the FY twenty eighteen special town meeting additional appropriation of sixteen thousand six hundred and forty dollars. And Mrs. Keegan, if you'd like to take this.
Yes, see, as a, with regard to background, the FY two thousand eighteen School Department General Fund operating budget was approved at the annual town meeting on May first, two thousand seventeen. At the time of the annual town meeting, and this has been the case for a number of years, the final state revenues, for instance, new growth and certified cash are not known at that time. So, the town does use the annual town meeting and the special town meeting combined, usually for the, for the, the budget for the whole fiscal year. When the final revenues are known, and they review the financial situation for possible additional revenues that they can appropriate to various departmental budgets. So, at the special town meeting on November sixth, the school department received an additional appropriation of sixteen thousand six hundred and forty dollars, and that additional amount brings the total FY two thousand eighteen general fund operating budget to twelve million eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. I do have two lines, we have to appropriate it for Gene in order to post it, has to appropriate to certain lines. And if you'll recall, when I came to you with the transfers and talking about how tight the budget was, there was one line that was a little over thirteen thousand, still in the, in the red, so most of it is going to that line. That's a district-wide network support technician salary account. If you recall, we did increase that to full-time from point five, which was desperately needed in the district. So, we do appreciate that, so this will take care of that. And then the small additional balance, I will just put in the, the top line, district-wide school committee salary wage adjustments. So, if, if the, if the school committee so, so approves.
Does anyone have any questions?
I move to approve the following line item. No questions, thank you. Budget adjustments pursuant to the additional appropriation of sixteen thousand six hundred and forty dollars to the FY two thousand eighteen School Department General Fund operating budget at the November sixth, two thousand seventeen special town meeting. Broken down as follows, thirteen thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars to account number one zero zero four four zero zero eight dash five one 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 zero, district-wide network support technician salary account, and two thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars to account number one zero zero one 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 zero eight dash five one zero zero zero, district-wide SC salary wage adjustments.
School committee, yeah.
School committee, thank you. The additional appropriation brings the FY two thousand eighteen School Department General Fund operating budget to twelve million eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. That's a mouthful.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
No problem.
No, that was a lot.
Next is the Douglas Elementary School out-of-state field trip to PIPAC, Mr. Means.
Okay, so, Mr. Seadlebaum, as you know, has... Okay, so, uh, Mr. Seetabom, as you know, has, um, conferences tonight, so he's not able to come and present it, so he asked if I would be able to do so. So, of the grade three teachers and grade three students would like to attend, um, on the fourteenth of December, a trip to the Providence Performing Arts Center. There would be, um, a total of four teachers, three paraprofessionals, and one nurse who would be, who, who would be attending. The performance is of something called the Nutcrackers, something like that, so it's, it should be a good show. I, I've never been to the, the, the Performance Center to see the Nutcracker, but I have been to the one in Boston. I'm sure the kids are gonna love it. I'm sure it'll be a great take for them. Um, the, they'll be taking Tellstone buses, they'll be taking two buses, uh, the nearest, as it indicates on your, in your form, they do have a, uh, the Hasbro Children's Center is very, Children's Hospital is very close by. The cost per student is fifteen dollars, um, and of course, the, the benefit is that it's a cultural trip, give the students an opportunity to experience the theater, uh, professional theat- theatrical performance. Uh, I think they're gonna have a great time, they're gonna probably enjoy the, the heck out of it. Uh, the only thing that I would note is, and I did talk to Mr. Seetabom today, is that they do not at this time have a, uh, bad weather date. So in other words, if at the fourteenth was a bad weather date at this, at this point, I think the trip would have to come back with another date, because right now they do not have a, a bad weather date. So my sense is, if the weather is okay, they'll be good. If you approve, if it's, if it is bad and we cancel school, that, that would be a problem, we would have to-
Just so you know, um, there's a Douglas middle school student who is in this particular production, so.
Oh, really? Oh, really?
Yes.
Oh.
Really?
Yes, so we will be supporting her.
Very good. So, um, they're asking for the school committee's, uh, permission to, uh, go to Providence Island, to the Providence Performing Arts Center to see the Nutcracker performed. Uh, again, it's grade three students, there's eighty-four total students that are planning on attending.
Any questions? So we need a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the grade three field trip to Providence Performing Arts Center, Providence Island.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Um, now it's all you, Mr. Means.
So I've, I've added a lot of things in here, but, um, none of them that require any votes or anything to that, to that effect, but just some updates on, within the district, uh, starting with the Veterans Day Assembly, Kelly did talk a little bit about it. Um, uh, again, the, uh, Courtney and I had a chance to go to both, both presentations, and I know, sure, you were at, uh, the elementary, I can't remember, we- was I saying, uh, elementary, I'm sorry, primary?
Yeah.
Yep. Um, the, the high schools are very, it's, it's, it's interesting, they're both very different. Um, the, the high school is more historical, because Mrs. Fitz, being the department chair for the history department, um, really focuses on, uh, educating the students on all of the different conflicts that we've been involved in, the sacrifices that have been made, and, and really talks about the branches of the military as well. It also features, uh, individual, uh, students who submit poems or readings that they would like to do. Um, and, and, and they get selected by, um, by the, a committee, I believe, and then they get the opportunity to perform an original poem or, or, or something that they've written. Um, we also had the opportunity this year, um, to have a number of students who, uh, read letters home, which was, which was the theme. They were doing a lot of letters from each of the, each of the wars and, and, um, narrated those and, and gave a little bit of a sense of what each of those wars was like. Uh, so very poignant, uh, Mr. Romano was in his full, uh, fatigues, and he, um, was presenting, presented a, a little bit as well. Um, the, um, band and the, and the, um, auxiliary teams all performed as well, and the Hortons also performed. So it was a, um, really nice event. It was probably about fifty minutes in duration, and, um, it was, the kids, the kids are always great at, at the event, um, just so respectful. And, um, so we wanted to acknowledge all of the, the people, and as Kelly mentioned, uh, Mrs. Fitzpatrick for her leading, leadership of it. And over the past eight years, I've always been at the high school, and I've never had a chance to go down to the, the primary school, which I thought was very interesting, again, very different. Um, the first piece of it is, as a high school principal, you're really proud of the high school kids and the way they conduct themselves on stage, and they present their, their, their work and so forth. And then you go to the primary school, and they're just so cute. It's, it's sort of, they're adorable, and it's, it was very different for me.
And very well behaved.
Yeah, they are very well behaved, yep. Um, uh, they did perform, all of the, the students did perform a number of songs and they, and, and, and a couple of, um, interactive, uh, questions and answers type of thing, um, featured a, um, a sign spelling out veterans across the front, each kid had a different letter and so forth. Um, they, they just, uh, they've just brought a, a smile to everybody that was in attendance, uh, they were, it was just really, really nice. I do want to, um, compliment, uh, Mr. Buono for, who is our new choral teacher, did a great job with the kids, some really great performances, uh, the decorations were, were really nice. Um, have to shout out to the PTO for the meal, uh, which was, um, they, they, was really, really good. Um, highly recommend the kibasa. Um, the other piece of it was that, um, a nice feature was that some of the parents, or grandparents, got to have breakfast with their, their, their child or their grandchild, which was really, really nice, um, o- opportunity as well. Um, there was a gentleman, a veteran, who, who stood up and, um, spoke on behalf of, I think, all the veterans and thanked them for just simply being recognized, and for them taking the time to recognize them. Um, I should mention that there were forty-six veterans that were recognized, uh, one by one in the, um, in the presentation. And, um, clearly a shout out to all of the teachers and the support staff. Um, I mean, the kids were just great, and they, they really followed the lead, but, um, I also would be absolutely remiss if I didn't recognize Mrs. Socia for all of her work in planning and, and orchestrating the whole event. It was just a great, great event. And both of them, in different ways, were both very poignant and, um, I think, um, reflected the, the spirit of Veterans Day. They were both really, really good.
I, I have a neighbor who's a veteran, attended the, uh, primary school event. Big tough guy, typically doesn't gush on about anything, but he, he went on and on about, about the event, and was, you know, was, was so impressed with it and, um, really appreciated.
The kids are just so cute. It's, it's just so different, you know?
Yeah.
And, and, and you, and they were singing their hearts out. They really were. They were singing their hearts out. Uh, the next thing I have on the, uh, on the, the docket is an update on NEASK. So as you know, the high school is going through their self-study process. Uh, the first, um, standard that they, uh, are gonna be voting on, and, and they have finalized the document, is the core values, uh, the expectation, the, the belief statement, and the expectations for learning, social and civic, um, as well. So the, um, they've gone through a process of reviewing, um, from the last visit, from the five-year, which is actually was seven years, because you know, we got, we, we had two years of, um, extension, because they were, they were changing the process and asked to, and we gladly moved back a couple of years. So they've, they've, they've gone through the process of reviewing, uh, all of our core values, um, all of our expectations for learning, um, our statement of beliefs, made some adjustments and modifications. They got input from all stakeholders and, 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 and made their adjustments. Um, they do look specifically at, um, now gathering the data that the, um, self-study committee is gonna be looking for. Okay, so you say that you're assessing the students on writing creatively, um, samples of how you're assessing them on writing creatively. The rubric that you're using to assess them on that. Um, so they, they're, they're gathering that information as part of their standard. Um, they made modest adjustments to it, um, and, uh, they did do a, um, they, we did have to reach out to IPASS. Um, one of the things that I, I, we presented to you, I think it was probably started a year and a half, two years ago, I think it was two years ago, was that we, um, established rubrics to assess all of the expectations for learning, the social piece and the civic piece as well. And teachers have been assessing each and every student on all of those expectations, uh, based on the rubrics, and the data goes into, um, IPASS. We had to, we had to work with them to set up some, some additional columns in the, in the report card, so that parents could then look at it. So the, the first part of that was a, really a trial process. And, um, so each department has one or two of the, um, expectations that they're, they're, they're evaluating. So history and English predominantly do writes effectively or reads critically and that kind of stuff, and math and science tend to do critical thinking and problem solving as expectations. So now the issue is that, now we need to work with IPASS to now yearly pull that data out. So you're, they're assessed twice during the year, so you'll have a final assessment. So what NEASK is gonna be looking for is, okay, you're assessing them, now how are you being, how are you able to, 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 A, quantify that they've met it? So in other words, if I was a history teacher and, and, uh, Ms. Keegan was in my history class, and she rated as a, uh, uh, exemplary, they're gonna wanna know, okay, can you show me some examples that you use to assess her, to put her in the exemplary category? So that's the next step, and, and this, it's, it's really a big step. Um, and we're working with, um, IPASS, the, the issue that we might have with the self-study is that they created the, the columns for us, and they've created the ability to enter it, but in, they have not created the way for us to extrapolate it as of yet. So Kathy Brosnahan, uh, Mr. Romano, and, um, others are working with IPASS to get that information. And that will be the final piece of it. They'll bring it to the entire staff to vote upon, uh, the school council will have an opportunity to vote upon it, and that'll be the first of these self-study standards that will be completed, so that's, uh, they're sort of leading the way. They did do a survey, which I thought was really, really interesting. Um, the outcome, and the survey basically asked the, um, the students and, uh, parents and staff, what role the core values, what role the statement of beliefs really play, are you within the school environment, do you know what the core values are? Because what's gonna happen is the self-study is gonna be, committee is gonna come in, and they're gonna walk up to a student out of the clear blue, can you tell me, you know, two of your core values? And, and, and because we, um, A, we read them each, each week, they get read a number of times, as does the statement of beliefs, as does the, the district's mission statement. Um, our kids are pretty familiar with them, but it, again, the process is a little bit more than just knowing that perseverance is, is one of our core values. How is that, why is that a core value, and, and how do you, how are you gonna demonstrate that students are, are persevering? And you, there's things such as, you know, the AP courses, or, or a student taking on a, um, um, an act of, a community service activity that was troublesome or difficult. Uh, plenty of examples where the students have, can demonstrate perseverance, uh, participating in a, in a, in a, um, a program, a, a band chorus, or, you know, things like, such as that. Plenty of things that where they can demonstrate that. Integrity is another one, so, but what the self-study committee is gonna wanna do is be able to talk to a student, and the student be able to articulate that. And that's the piece, that's the, the important piece. And that's all part of that first standard. So, but the survey did come back very, very favorable. Um, and I think they feel very confident that students are pretty well-versed in the first of the standards, which is the core values and the statement of beliefs and expectations. So that's the update on NEASK.
How many standards are there?
Uh, there used to be, um, I think there used to be nine, now there's seven. Seven. So each, and they're, all of them are working on the standards and, and gathering their information. Um, it is now, years gone by, you used to have to set aside a room and build these, 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 um, stacks of, of student work, just filled up with, with, with documents that they would come in and they would look at, but now it's all online, so that's been a bit of a learning experience, but they're all, it's, it's all being done online, so it's all a, a, um, paperless presentation now, so. Um, and as you know, it's not until October, but October is gonna be here before you know it. So, um, as you know, tonight is the next thing on the agenda, was parents' conferences. Um, as you know, uh, half-day today, so Douglas, I just wanted to give a quick rundown. Uh, tomorrow Douglas High School has a half-day, and they have their parent-teacher conferences tomorrow night from six to eight. Um, they're basically in five-minute increments, first come, first served, there's no appointments that are made at the high school. Um, you just rotate around the building and get to see it. Um, tends to be less attended than the, the, the other schools. Um, so that's why they don't have appointments and so forth. And if anybody does not have an opportunity to see a teacher, um, at the high school, then they can always reach out to the guidance department, and they will arrange for, for a meeting. The Douglas Middle School is, has, has their, uh, conferences tonight, today was a half-day. Um, their conferences are from six to eight tonight, uh, tomorrow is another half-day, and Friday's a half-day. Uh, their conferences tomorrow and Friday are eleven-thirty to one-thirty, they are by appointment. Um, I understand that it's a very full-time schedule, and it's a ten-minute increments, um, but they, they're, they're, all, everybody's dance cards are pretty full. The elementary school, uh, today was also a half-day for them. Their conferences tonight are from six to eight. They also have a half-day tomorrow and Friday. Uh, their conference times are twelve to three, um, also very full. And then the primary school, again, had a half-day today, they are doing conferences tonight, six to eight. Their conferences on Thursday and Friday are from twelve forty-five to three o'clock, again, by appointment, and I believe they are also, uh, in ten-minute increments. So they also report that they have a very full schedule as well. So those are the, um, conferences. The entryway, if you don't mind, I'm, I just need to go to my phone, because Mr. Colette sent me a, uh, some additional information based on what I had for you. Let's see, where'd Jeff go? Sorry. So, uh, as you know, that we had a problem with, uh, water coming in, um, well, actually not being routed properly in the main entryway. So it's been, it's, Jeff's been all over it and addressing it, and, uh, working with, with Courtney on the process to make sure that it gets, it's getting taken care of. Uh, the people were there today, it's, um, actually, I, I wasn't sure, but it's called applied roofing. They took measurements, and they're gonna fabricate a drain spout with the novel idea of having it outside of the building, as opposed to inside the building. Uh, so, uh, that is, they, they'll be fabricating that, and, and the expectation is that within the next week or so, that they hope to have that installed. Uh, the Mason does want to, uh, try to close up the, the opening within the next couple of weeks, because the weather's getting colder and so forth. Uh, they've been out to look at it, and they have a, they have a, a plan in place there as well. And, um, um, say, Service Master, I keep, I keep, I keep her on a blank on it this afternoon. Service Master has been in, uh, the, the, the goal is to try to look at, um, any, uh, remediation that needs to be done inside the, um, the, at the, um, the brick area, to get water out of it, but also the entryway, which is the rug area. And then also inside the, um, Assistant Principal's office, Mr. Aronian's office, to look at, does, is there any drying that needs to go on, is there any, any kind of, uh, additional work that needs to be done in there? So they've, they, they plan to attack that, the, uh, the office in, in the, um, the, the brick structure itself as soon as possible. And Jeff's plan is to hold off on the entryway rug until the December holiday. Uh, that way they can, there'll be nobody coming in and out, it won't, it won't block up the, um, the entryway. Uh, the work that will be done should not impede the ability to get in and out of the building from the main entrance. So that's a quick update on that, it's been, it's been interesting.
Excuse me?
We, I did wanna speak, I'm sorry.
Sorry, um, did you find out why, if the whole thing is covered, and if the, if it's, if that downspout is still being blocked?
Uh, it is still being blocked. It is. And the reason was that the, the Masons did not want to remove, um, the other, the, the front section as well. Because then that, now, now you, he told me it was something about that, um, they would have to open it up, and because of where they already opened up, it might compromise the structure itself.
Okay.
Because it'd be on two, it'd be on, basically on two sides. Um, but maybe it won't rain in the next. Well, I mean, the, the hope is that they're gonna be pretty expedient, as I said, he wants to try to get it installed within the next, the, um, the data within the next week, so that'll, that'll, will eliminate that problem. Um, so hopefully that will, something that they can take care of. I don't, I, how in the world that ever was, was done is beyond my imagination. Um, recently, um, there was an incident here at the high school, um, not a, not a, a new or an uncommon incident, but we had a problem with our neutralization room, which is directly below that, that, um, that doorway outside. Um, the neutralization room is where the, all of the drains from the science classrooms come to, and exactly that, neutralized and then, and then processed. Um, historically, uh, this has happened a few times over the, over a period of time. If you don't, uh, effectively and continuously run the water in the drains in the classrooms, um, you'll get a little bit of a, of an odor that will come out of the neutralization room, and it smells a little bit like sulfur, um, or rotten eggs. And, and if you have a slop sink in your basement that, you know, you don't use very often, and you, and it just sits there, there, there is still water, and there is still stuff in there, it will eventually emanate a smell. So when they came in on a Monday morning, it was last Monday, um, we've had this happen before, there, the odor was present. And so the process is, is really very quickly resolved, and it's by turning on the water and all the faucets, letting it run for, for a period of time, but it does take a little bit of time. So, um, we did, uh, we did have the fire department, the fire chief in, in the department came up, they did tests. Everything was fine from the beginning of the, the, the day to the, to the dis- Everything was fine from the beginning of the, of the day to the, till it dissipated, there's no, no harmful agents. The concern was that some, some, there was a sense that we had exposed the students to a noxious and maybe even a toxic en- environment. And of course, I just wanted to belabor anybody's belief that we would ever allow our students to be in an environment that was unhealthy and unsafe. The, 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 the simplest of solutions is to run the drains. The other solution is to simply close the doors in the classroom, it doesn't, it doesn't come into the classrooms. And within an hour, maybe an hour and fifteen minutes, the, the odor was completely dissipated. As a matter of fact, I came in and the only thing I could smell was the STARS class making cupcakes. So, I mean, I didn't notice anything and it was completely dissipated. But I know that there were some students that were dismissed, I think one or two that got dismissed. And there was, from what I understand, there was some concerns that were articulated in social media. We did have Mr. Romano, as soon as he got the all-clear from the fire department, he immediately did a one-call to all the parents in the high school to let them know that, A, the issue had occurred, B, the issue, issue has been effectively dealt with. At no time was there any health concern for the students to be in the building. I, I, as I, I've been here for a number of years, I think it's probably happened two or three times previous. And, and the problem was that it was over the weekend, so as soon as you, as soon as you, 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 you get a smell, you can immediately go turn the water on. The problem was that it happened over a weekend, so nobody was in the building, nobody ran the water, and that's why it was a little bit stronger. And, and so, but it was, it was addressed. Chief Vincent was very helpful to come up and, and he declared, made, declared that the building was completely safe. And we did do the one-call as quick as, as we could to let parents know the status of the neutralization incident. So, and then the last thing is, I wanted to give a quick update on MCAS and I'm not sure how many had the opportunity to read, but there was a, a nice article in the Boston Globe just recently on a, on the weekend, on a Sunday, that districts are looking at their data. As you know, new test, new methods of, of testing, and so everybody is, is noticing some dips in their overall performance. We won't be any different from, from that. The other piece is that we've been contacted and Josh Romano is looking into, because the high school next year will be doing theirs, it'll be an all-electronic exam. They're gonna be, they're gonna try, there's, the state is looking for people to volunteer to do, basically tryouts, try out an exam and try it out on the, on the technology to make sure that it's working effectively and so forth. So, the, the only problem is that they had reached out to us to see if we would be interested in biology and we were kinda hoping that it wouldn't be biology, we were looking to do it in math. Biology test scores have been pretty strong throughout the, the years, so we were hoping that we might be able to get it. So he's gonna look out to see, look to see if they can change it and let us do the math piece of it instead of the biology. The other thing they offered us was the physics and we don't have physics as, as a testing competency right now, so. But, what came out of the, the MCAS results in, in what the admin team, and I wanted to update you on where we're going, is that the admin team has sat and really looked at last year's data, but also looked at a twelve-year, eleven or twelve-year in some cases, and I, and I have it, it's, it's, this is all the, the data here and it's all broken down by, excuse me, by grade level, by, by academic discipline. So, third grade ELA, third grade math, third grade, and, and it, it just traces them, their performance back ten or eleven or twelve years depending upon how, and, and so we've gathered all of that data to really take a look at the, the areas where we've been performing really well, areas where we've been sort of following the state average and areas where we've been below with the state averages. And so that information has been, has been accumulated, it has been shared with the admin team. The admin team has now begun working with each of the, the, the testing grades on performance evaluation and assessment. Then the other piece of it is that, that you can literally go in, and I'll just give you a quick example. This is a breakdown of one test and it breaks down the standard, how we performed, how the state performed and where we are overall in comparison. And it will tell you that, you know, on writing a narrative and describing what might happen and the next in the passage, we outperformed the state, and, and this was in grade three. And you get it for grade three, you get it for grade five, and it breaks it down, and it breaks down every single standard in every single academic discipline from last year's tests. So that information is being, is being disseminated to the teachers so that they can look at areas where they, where they were really strong, areas where they may not have performed as well, and that, take a look at their, their planning, their instruction, the time spent on it, and, and, and know that there are some areas that they need to spend more time on. The goal with that obviously is that knowing the areas where their, the students didn't perform as well, they can now address that going forward and attack it going forward. And the biggest piece of that is, is that, is the, is the, getting the data, and a lot of districts have a data team, so I guess our data team is myself and the administrators because we've all been sort of gathering up the data. Now, the other piece to this is that it breaks down how Kevin Maines did on grade nine ELA individually and it will tell you, it'll give you my raw score. So if I fell, if I fell into the needs improvement category, it will tell you the reason why I fell in the needs improvement category is because I didn't perform well on this standard, that standard, this standard, that standard and so forth. The extra work there is now, is for the teacher to take a look at, okay, now I know collectively they didn't do well, okay? And now I know the students that didn't do well. But then that information gets passed on to the next grade. So now you have, not only has the, the ninth-grade teacher taken a look at it, or really ninth-grade is in a testing date, so let's say the seventh-grade teacher has taken a look at it, and now they've passed it on to the eighth-grade teacher so that they can work effectively with the learners 'cause they now know areas where they're strong, areas where they're not weak and they can try to address it. It's a lot of work, it is a huge amount of work. It will be a change agent, but it won't happen immediately. And so the goal with this is to introduce the process, which is tedious, which is, there's a, there's a lot of time that needs to be spent looking at it and then going back in, in, in adjusting your instruction and your planning. But as we get used to the process, the hope is that we'll see that teachers are, are taking a look at that data, making notations in their planning and in their curriculum guides, and then the following year, addressing those because now they have that information in front of them. So that's the extra layer of work that's involved. It is, it's going on in all the buildings except for the primary school obviously, but it's going on in the three buildings. And the admin team is on board and they are selling it to the, the faculty. And we want it to be looked at horizontally, so by grade, but then also vertically. So, for grade six and grade seven and grade eight to sit down and talk about ELA and look at the data for six, seven and eight, and where we're strong and where we need to, to focus more attention on. So to build it that way, the same thing going into the high school as well. So, the, the, the misperception, and I don't want anybody to come away with the, with the idea that we're trying to strategize on how to pass the MCAS or perform better on the MCAS teaching to the test. The idea is that, and, and the, the understanding is that we want people to have is that these are the known standards for each grade level going across the, the three buildings, that students need to prove competency in when they graduate. So it's, it's not about getting a two-forty and getting more students to get a two-forty, which obviously we do want more students to get a two-forty, but it's, it's, it's about looking at the standards and how are we making sure that our students, 'cause those standards represent the expectation for every student in the state of Massachusetts to be college and career-ready. And so that's what we're really trying to focus on, is, is improving their performance and their, their comprehension and their ability to demonstrate their understanding in each of these standards. So that's the work that's going on with regards to MCAS and data. And it's the first really real foray, I shouldn't say it's the first, it's, it's the first foray district-wide that we're all working on it and, and trying to develop a strategy to allow us to use it to go forward. Now the goal in this is, I think we're at a, a teetering point right now. We are presently a level-two school district, which is great, there's a, a high percentage of the, the school districts in the state are level-two. The goal is to, is to go to level-one. And one of the determining factors, a major determining factor in, in, in going to level-two to level-one is, is a stronger performance on the state competency exams. Can't get away from it, have to accept it and, and just, and just deal with it. The problem is that if you look at some scores, if we, if, in some areas, there's been some, some areas where we have underperformed historically, ten, twelve, eleven, twelve, thirteen years, where we may not have performed above the state average in that, that discipline over a period of twelve years. That's the stuff that we need to really look at and say, why is that? And, and how, how do we change that, how do we turn that around? Because the only way you're gonna raise the scores is to address it systematically so that you don't have any place in, in, in your curriculum where they are continuously below state averages. And so that's the information that we've shared with them. It's not an indictment, it's not a, it's not a criticism, it's, it's, it's using the data to become informed, to inform your practice, which is what good, you know, good practice is. So that's kind of what we're, we're looking to do with it. And the goal is to not slip to a level-three, but to, but to challenge ourselves to move to a level-one. Will we be a level-one in, in the blink of an eye? Absolutely not, this is a process and it will take some time. But then it becomes, once it becomes part of what you do, I think then you'll see the real dividends. And it could be a few years, but, but this is the real process. So, the long and short of it is, we'll be on, we'll be here the twentieth to present our results. But this, we felt that this was much more important work that needed to, needed to be done. And I wanna, I, I do wanna compliment the administrative team, but also the teachers who are, I, I believe are seeing it in the proper light, which is not, hey, you know, what are you doing about this? It is, listen, this is, these are the things, this is information, like I just said, that should drive change within, within all of our, our classrooms.
Um, can you, we added the Title I math this year.
Correct.
Was that, can you refresh my memory, was that only for the primary or was that primary and elementary?
Primary through four.
Primary through four. So what would you, what's the expectation for seeing an increased level of learning in math based on Title I services? Like would, 'cause I assume that that helps translate to MCAS as well.
So I think, I think over time, you'll see, you'll see the growth. So I, I think a good example of that is, the, the reading program's been in place for a while. And I think that you can see tangible gains because it's been in place and it's been, it's been, we've been addressing areas where students have, have needs and, and that is, is translating. So I think that it's, it's gonna take a few years for it to get, to really get off the ground. But if we hadn't implemented, we would just continue to stay behind the eight ball on this and we really need to get ahead of it. And so the hope is that you'll see some modest gains. So in other words, we'll look at the students who are receiving the services this year and wherever they took an MCAS competency, so in grade three, they would, would probably be the perfect place to, to look at it. You know, how did they perform on it? And, but if that's their first, their first MCAS exam, you really need to wait until the next exam, which would be grade five. So it'd be a couple of years before you'd really be able to have some data to really assess it against, how they, how they benefited from it. But I think it's, 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 it's the right thing to do. And, and I think we, I think we all collectively know that there would be, if we had the opportunity, we'd like to do more in those areas. If we, in previous years, we were able to do two maths, which was, which was helpful. We used to have two Englishes in, at certain grade levels as well to, to support them, so. So, but we will come in on the twentieth to do a general overview. But I wanted you to know tonight, the work that has been going on for the last probably month or so since this information came out. And Courtney can tell you my, my, that long table that I have, and Sherry, you can tell us. It's, it's had data all over the place, it's been spread out everywhere and it's been all over the board and so, to the point where they would really like me to get out into classrooms and spend a little less time giving them more stuff. But I think this is, this is important and the teachers are, are being asked another thing to do. And I'm hoping that they're gonna see the, the real merit in it so that they'll embrace it going forward. And that's everything I had.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll move on to the school business and operation manager's report, please.
First, I'm just going to inform you, although I will be bringing the agenda item summary for approval regarding it at the next meeting. But Monday, we had our FREK oil bid opening and Santa Energy won the bid, bid at two-point-oh-six-one-one. The current year is one-point-eight-three-nine-zero. We bid in eighteen for ninety-one thousand gallons, nineteen, I mean seventeen. Which year am I talking about now? Yeah, eighty-five thousand, wait, sorry, FY eighteen. I'm, you know, I've been working on three years, the last few weeks all at one time, I'm getting very confused. FY eighteen, we bid ninety-one thousand gallons FY, for nineteen, which is what this one is for, we did eighty-five thousand. We had a little bit of a carryover. So it'll be a little bit of a difference, obviously, to the budget, but not huge because of the gallons. Of course, knock on wood, hopefully we won't have a very bad winter and need to go beyond the eighty-five thousand gallons that we bid. So I will be presenting all the information on that, but I just wanted to let you know, there were three bidders, for FY eighteen, there were five for FY nineteen, so that, that's a good sign. There was a lot of discussion about whether or not we should throw it out, go back out to bid in a few weeks and, you know, things aren't gonna change in a few weeks. And I think with, my recommendation was at the meeting that given a lot of things that we see going on nationally and in the world, I, I just don't, I would not expect that, the longer we wait, I think it would just be worse, so. And I look at it, that it's, at least it's not well over three dollars a gallon, which it was a few years back, which was really bad if you recall that, that went up tremendously from one year to another. So, but I'll be bringing the agenda item summary on that, I just wanted to let you know that that does affect our budget going forward.
That has to be related to the storms, what happened in Houston and so forth, as well as the continued upheaval in the Middle East as well, so.
Right. Yeah, and it's still not as bad as, you know.
No.
You know, so. And the only other thing I have for you this evening is two thousand and eighteen budgetary transfer request number six. These are all, almost all except for the last one, requested from administrators. We'll be bringing a few more next time too, to clean up some more of the general fund budget. Does anybody have any questions?
Nope. Make a motion, that is good.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the Douglas Public Schools FY two thousand and eighteen budgetary transfer request number six, school committee meeting November fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
I do have one other thing that I just remembered. We do have, as you're aware, we do have miscellaneous donations. And when I came on board, I, you know, made sure I researched them all and, and we've been spending those down for the purposes that they are intended. There was a, an amount, just, I think it was ten thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty cents that came in, in April of two thousand and eleven, long before I came here. But it was actually from the elementary school at that time, it was where our primary school is right now, actually participating in a, an Iowa update of the Iowa tests, believe it or not, way back then. And so they, they receive those funds and, and to be used for whatever purposes, purposes. Most of that money has still been sitting there all these years, just over six thousand dollars. So we will be processing just short of that amount to provide access points at the primary school and also for mounted projectors. The primary school is in great need of technological things. It's actually been, you know, coddling around the school, back and forth, projectors. So, and, you know, from my point of view, and you'll hear this from the finance director too on the town side, often, there was one-time funds, the best use is for something that's going to last a long time. And so we thought that was a very good use of the funds, rather than buying expendable, you know, materials that are just, are consumables or, or, or anything like that. We will never be able to budget for those items going forward.
For access points?
Thank you. Access points for, um.
Wifi.
Internet wifi and, and the projectors, by the way, will connect to the whiteboards. And we did receive, almost all of the rooms have whiteboards, I don't know if you recall, they were donated to the school a few years back, so that was great. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. So I am spending most of that down for their intended purpose rather than having it sitting there 'cause we just have not been able to budget for things.
Yeah.
And as you also know, on the town side, they have a great, you know, capital planning committee and the town... and the town certainly would love to if they had the funding available for any departmental needs, whether it be school or, you know, highway or fire or police. They do have a very good process here and every year they do go through the process and make the town aware of needs of all the departments and we do participate in that. But they're just so short of available revenues, they haven't been able to do as much as they would like to do. So, I was very happy that we could do that with, with funds that we had available. So, I just want to make you aware of that.
And they're earmarked for the kindergarten and the first grade.
Mm-hmm, yeah, primary school. Yes, so they'll be very happy. Cindy's ecstatic, she thinks the staff is going to be ecstatic. And I think it'll definitely service the students there very well as well because they've been very behind on the technology end of it. So, I want to make you aware of that.
So, tonight, we do need executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, where an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the committee. And to conduct collective bargaining, as well as to discuss strategy related to non-union contract. We do welcome Mrs. Keegan, Mr. Means for part of it, Mrs. Keegan for all of it, obviously. And when the executive session is concluded, there will be no further public discussions. So, no further public business conducted, so everything will be adjourned. That's it.
And it is? 15?
Eight eleven.
Roll call vote?
Oh, roll call vote, please. Thanks.
Julie Finnegan, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Brett Argle, aye.
Gillian Kinnear, aye.
Shari Zetlin, aye.